We will call to order the Fairview Planning Commission meeting for December 12th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Ms. Jones, if you will please take attendance.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Senyard?
Present.
Ms. Schulist?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Butler?
Present.
Mr. Calley?
Here.
Mr. Magner?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. McDonald?
Present.
All will rise for the prayer and pledge. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here today. Be with us as we consider what's before us and guide us to sound decisions through constructive discussion and debate. Give us patience and understanding throughout the process. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Williams, Senyard?
Ms. Williams?
Thank you.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Move on to citizen comments. Do we have any this evening?
None tonight.
And we have approval of the minutes for both the November 14th, 2023 regular meeting and the November 27th, 2023 work session.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Magner Williams for the approval.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Abstain.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Mayor Anderson? Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
There is no old business this evening, so we will move to new business. Item one, PC Resolution PC 40-23 Development Plan, Bellhaven Reagan Smith Associates Zero Highway 96, MAP 021 Parcel 021.01. Current zoning RM 8 pud. 484 homes on 251.16 acres. Property owner WUSF for Bellhaven LLC. We will... Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second to get us to discussion.
Schulist, Senyard, we will start with staff comments.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you for being here. The staff report for PC 40-23. For the project Bellhaven, the application type is development plan. The applicant is Jay Easter with Reagan Smith Associates. This property has been brought to you previously in the work session a couple of weeks ago, and this is not the first time you've seen a development plan from this group. Mr. Jay Easter has submitted on behalf of Anthony Sparrow with Walton Group, a development plan for Bellhaven subdivision. Bellhaven is a proposed neighborhood on 251.16 acres, containing a mixture of single-family detached residences and attached townhomes. The neighborhood contains a 2.61 acre location for an amenity center, along with 1.25 miles of walking trails. Of the 251 acres, 90.75 acres, 36% of the site is designated as open space, with an additional 30.09 acres set aside for a sanitary drip field. The neighborhood contains 484 total homes on three different sized, single-family detached lots. The lot sizes are Type A, 95 feet by 150 feet, Type B, 75 feet by 130 feet, and Type C, 57 feet by 120 feet. The overall density of the proposed neighborhood is 1.93 units per acre. The neighborhood is located on two parcels, Tax Map 21 Parcel 021.00 and Tax Map 18 Parcel 41.00, which are zoned RM 8 pud, multifamily residential district, and contain the 251 plus or minus acres. The properties for Bellhaven are not located within a flood hazard area, Zone X, as indicated on FEMA Firm Panel 47187C0020F. Tonight, we are here to determine substantial compliance. This project was approved in 2008 by the Board of Commissioners as a RM 8 pud planned unit development. That language has changed in our documents to now be planned overlay development. Within that, you begin with a preliminary master development plan, and then you are asked as a planning commission to determine if a development plan is in substantial compliance with their preliminary master. The items that you are being asked to address tonight and look at and evaluate in your determination is that a site development plan shall be deemed in substantial compliance with the master development plan if it does not involve any of the changes outlined below. If it does not violate any provisions of this article unless specified, specifically noted on the previously approved controlling document of this planned overlay district, if it does not reduce the minimum lot sizes, minimum building setbacks, or minimum lot widths, if it does not involve a reduction of more than 5% of the area shown on the master development plan as reserved for open space, if it does not increase the total square footage of floor area proposed in the master development plan for non-residential use by more than 2%, if it does not increase in the overall density nor an increase in the density of any specific phase of the development, if there are not changes to roadway alignments or lot layouts that significantly deviate from the approved master development plan, if there is not land that is included outside the boundaries of the approved planned overlay district, and if they do not use any, involve any land use not specified in the approved controlling document, in any instance where a site development plan, including minor changes authorized under the provision of subsection 10-203.8, is found to not meet the test of substantial compliance that I just read, as set forth herein, such plans may be, may only be approved upon adoption of appropriate amendments to the planned overlay district. With that, I turn it back over to Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Is there anyone from representing the applicant that would like to join us? Is there anything that you would like to state at the moment, or should we just open it to questions and?
Yes, I'd love to do a presentation and then address some of the items.
Sure, go ahead.
My name is Scotty Burnick. I'm a landscape architect with Reagan Smith and Associates. I'm here on behalf of our client, DR Horton. As mentioned, I want to specifically address a little bit of the plan for some of the, that weren't here at the work session, and then also because of the work session, respond to some of the substantial compliance items and address those. I think that was a concern and an item that we heard. First, whenever we, Jay, I don't know if you're able to get the rendering on, I'll keep talking while he's doing that. You know, first part of looking at a site development plan is we assess the zoning that's in place. Obviously, that's the 2008 pud that's in place. Second, we assess all of the other controlling factors. And controlling factors is important because that's looking at current codes, current subdivision regulations. It could be hydrological or emergency connections, those types of things. You know, as part of this process, we did a hydrological assessment on the property to identify potential wetlands, streams, wet weather conveyances, and the regulatory buffers that are associated with each of those items. We also done a lot of due diligence with the utility provider, specifically here, the Water Authority of Dixon County. We consulted a lot with city staff. We've had, followed a lot of the recommended processes. As you know, we've been before you specifically to try and amend the previously pud. I would stated that was an option. That went through, that was not successful with a different approach. What we're doing tonight is here to provide a plan that's compliant with the zoning that's currently in place. We also met with the fire marshal, the fire chief throughout the process. Again, sort of on the plan as we talked through some of these items, wanted to point out a little bit about the layout. You'll notice that we're still maintaining the six external points of ingress egress. There's one off Highway 96, one off Northwest Highway, one off Dice Lampley Road, two off Anderson Road, and one off Elrod Road. Internally, we've made some improvements to the circulation internally to the development. We've done that to minimize impact to the natural water resources of the site. We did that to meet road geometries requested and required by staff, and we did that to meet connectivity requirements per our conversations with the fire marshal and the fire chief. This plan here shows 483 lots. That's a density of 1.92. There was a difference in the number. This is one less than a couple of weeks ago when we were before you, and we'll mention that a little bit later. There's a decrease in 242 lots, which is 33% less than the approved 725 lots of the approved plan. Jay, if you don't mind, I'll turn to C 3.0. Here, this is sort of a phasing plan. Just wanted to highlight a couple of items. You know, as mentioned, there's naturally less overall density on the site with the decrease of lots. More specifically, there's equal or less density per phase. That's another sort of key component that we're looking at. The lot sizes exceed the minimum standards of the 2008 plan. The minimum standard of 2008 was actually a 5,400 square foot lot. That's what the zoning, our zoning says. Also, part of that plan, there was some diagrams that conveyed lot types A, B, and C, and they gave some dimension criteria on those. Our proposed site development plan honors and respects and meets those exact dimensions of the 2008 plan, so no changes there. Jay, if you don't mind, you're on C, okay, C 5.0. Wanted to talk a little bit about lot distribution of the light, what I mean, of the layout. What I mean by that is sort of the typology of lots, the A, B, and C. On the bottom, you'll see the 2008 approved pud highlighting the colors of the different lot sizes, and that's important because there's placement of lot sizes and density and how that was oriented on the approved plan. As you'll see sort of on the top, we follow the design intent of that exact plan, locating the Type A, Bs, and C lots, as well as the D, which are the townhomes, in these same locations. Per our work session a few weeks ago, we were asked to consider making several of the lots near Highway 96 to be the medium size lot size. We incorporated that change with this plan. That was the difference in the lot count being one less, but again, those are 10 lots. They're closest to Highway 96, sort of the L of the property. Jay, if you don't mind, go back to the rendering. So again, sort of, you know, talking through design intent, I think design intent is a big thing that we look at, right? The design intent of the approved plan, where the lot types are, sort of responding to those. We removed lots, which was previously in the Phase 3 section of the 2008 pud. We did that after meeting with the utility district. Hit the next slide for open space. Wanted to highlight, obviously, we're proposing an increase in open space. This is an improvement to the 2008 pud. Jay, if you want to click to the next one, I'll talk through some of the amenities that were proposed and provide some imagery on here. We're proposing, let me first say, with the open space, the new requirements, if we were to do a pud today, the new requirements would have us do so much open space, and then a percent of that open space would have to be improved. Although our, our site development plan is regulated by a 2008 pud, which just said open space, we're still meeting the current day standards and exceeding the current day standards with the development plan to, again, try and honor the intent of what the city is wanting. So you'll see some really nice amenity spaces as part of this development. You'll see a dog park, a picnic pavilion, playgrounds, a wetland overlook, and walking trails throughout. When I say walking trails, there's a couple of different types. We have sort of the natural primitive trail like you would see in a state park, right? Over a mile of trail internally into the road system. The streetscape itself is one of the best amenities of the site with over probably nine miles of sidewalk. So when you add those together, you're getting a massive amenity that's really a great place. Those neighborhood making components that will make this a wonderful development. We're also maintaining the 30-foot perimeter buffers along the site. We're honoring all 16 conditions of approval. The conditions of approval were the site notes that were on the original 2008 pud that was in there. Next part, I said I really wanted to respond, as we heard at the work session, to go through substantial compliance and address those items. Wanted to note, we submitted a very detailed letter with our last application that addresses each item specifically. Also, as mentioned, there are eight items that are substantially compliant. In addition to those eight items, there are other controlling factors that have to be assessed in order to say if you're, we're substantially compliant. So number one, I'm going to paraphrase some of these out of respect for every's time, but you know, do we violate any provisions of the article not, not previously or specifically noted? And so this plan is not violating any of the eight substantial compliance items of the zoning ordinance, Article 10-203.5. This article requires compliance with, with other controlling factors which we're meeting. The zoning article 10-204.4.2B requires the development plan to comply with all other standards. We met those. So two places in the zoning ordinance sort of reflects other standards that we must meet in addition to the 2008 pud. The development plan, as I mentioned earlier, honors the design intent and the spirit of the approved pud. Number two was specific to minimizing lot sizes, setbacks, and lot widths. The site development plan we submitted meets all of the minimum building setbacks, the minimum lot sizes, and the lot width of the 2008 plan. Number three of substantial compliance speaks to involving a reduction of more than 5% of the area shown on the master development plan. Obviously, our site development plan does not reduce open space. We're increasing the open space. Number four references a total square footage of floor area. That's not applicable to the site. That's specific to non-residential use, so therefore, we're not increasing square footage. Number five, under substantial compliance, speaks to an increase in overall density and an increase of density sort of per phase. The site development plan does not increase overall density. We're, we've actually decreased density. The site development plan does not increase density in any specific phase of the development. More specifically, the phases provide the adequate horizontal lot area per each dwelling unit. On compliance item number six, changes to roadway alignment or lot layouts. Do they significantly deviate? And I think that's a key word as we're using, looking at terms. We learned last week and we heard, you know, significantly deviate is not defined in the zoning ordinance. What we can do though is use interpretation of the zoning code of the subdivision regulations that we had before us to help us understand the intent. So in the subdivision regulations, Article 2-106.110, number one and two, it actually indicates differences in minor and major revisions. It says that insignificant road shifts and street are defined as minor. It goes on to say, revisions determined by the city planner, by the city engineer, that constitute public interest are defined as major. So sort of wanted to break that down a little bit and understand. On the proposed site development plan, you know, there's minor internal road alignment adjustments done to comply with current standards. Those minor adjustments are done to comply with city staff request. Those minor alignment adjustments are made to comply with hydrological features on the site. The minor adjustments are made to protect the health, the safety, and the welfare of the community. They do not constitute a negative major impact towards public interest. No major adjustments to the external roadway, public right-of-way alignment, connection points have been made. Again, when we look at the site, these external points are the points that follow along existing public right-of-way. Right-of-way that's already there. Moving those, let's say significantly, moving those drastically could constitute public interest. What's happening there, we're maintaining those points. Internally, we're evolving and improving the road layout to respect the subregs, the zoning ordinance. What we should be doing, good design, I mean, this, we're doing the right thing here. We're getting it right. The 2008 pud was also approved when road alignment wasn't even considered as one of the substantial compliance items. There were only six at the time. So at the time the approved pud was done, there was specific notes in the language that says, you also have to meet these other factors, right? Other hydrological features. At the time when the pud was drawn and approved, there was understanding that these adjustments, these minor tweaks, would likely be considered on the plan, and that's what we're showing here. Zoning Article 10-203.5 identifies other controlling factors as means to determine substantial compliance. Minor changes or minor deviation to be in accordance with, with other controlling factors is actually required to be substantially compliant. What I mean is, we're making changes, minor changes here, so that we are substantially compliant. These are required by all of these other factors that we have in place. The lot layout complies with the intent and the pattern. We looked at the lot types and their placement of it. We've incorporated comments from the work session a few weeks back. Zoning Article 10-203.5 does not deem a decrease in lot density a violation of substantial compliance. As mentioned, the site development plan eliminates, removes lots in the previous Phase 3 area of the plan to meet the current standard of the Water Authority of Dixon County. Number seven, this is a seventh inning stretch. Hang with me. I'm almost done. Appreciate this. It talks about including the land area beyond this area. We're not proposing to obtain more land and bring it in. Not real applicable there. Number eight, it talks about compliance. Does it involve any land use not specified in the approved controlling documents? The site development plans does not introduce a new land use. In response to some of the dialogue we heard at the November 27th work session, there was some confusion and a little maybe misclassification of the essential utility service that were being required to use by the authority district. Opposition, I guess respectfully disagree, opposition had incorrectly suggested that we're proposing a centralized sewer impact facility. This misclassification would suggest that this is a new land use, where in fact, our site development plan, what we've brought before you, is proposing a decentralized, an onsite decentralized sewer system. Also, a part of our application, a letter and a very detailed letter going through the different types between a centralized and decentralized, what that means, was provided. We also have some representation here tonight that can talk through that a little bit more. During our November 27th work session, the commission asked about zoning classifications of other developments with very similar types of onsite decentralized systems. Although we found several, there's a couple I just wanted to note, Cumberland Estates and Otter Creek. I can provide the map and parcel if needed. Both of those were improved with sort of similar onsite decentralized systems. But the part I wanted to note is that each of those developments are zoned R-20, one and two family residential zoning classification. What I'm suggesting is, the land area, the overlay of the zoning designation on top of that system is residential. It wasn't rezoned to a higher use to provide that. So that classification further supports that the onsite decentralized sewer system is an essential utility service associated with residential activities. It's, and is not a land use that you would find under extensive impact facilities that would have required a different zoning. So again, a few weeks ago, we heard it was this type of system, which would be classified under this type of land use. That, I'm not disagreeing with that, but that's not what we have. It's a different type of system altogether. And I think that's important with some of the other plans that have been approved before the boards. The site development plan is consistent with the 2008 pud in that both the 2008 and our site development plan indicates this property will be served by the Water Authority of Dixon County. So no difference there, right? We're being served. Subdivision Regulation Article 5-103.303 requires the site development plan to note areas for decentralized onsite sewer system when public sewer is not available. So since conventional, public sewer is not available anymore, this is the time we're following the exact protocol, the procedure, the timeline to indicate this is the system that is on place. This happens with the development plans. We're following that timeline. In closing, you know, we've worked really hard to follow all of staff guidelines. We had a plan that we were going a different direction with, a different process, a zoning process, that was not successful. It was a great plan. We're looking back at what we have to work with. We're equally making a great plan that follows all of these compliances that is substantially compliant, that meets all these other standards. We've worked diligently with your city staff to confirm the compliance. We've made modifications to make this plan better. The site development plan meets the intent of the zoning that's in place. It respects the natural resources. It incorporates other controlling factors required for the development. We've provided thorough responses to questions brought up at the work session. We're in agreement with all staff comments and their recommendations. We'd respectfully ask for your support and approval this evening, and myself and a lot of the design development team is here for question and answers at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time we will open it up to the Planning Commission for question and comment.
I have a question, Chairman.
Go ahead.
If, if you don't mind, if you can come back to the mic or address this question. Could you give some specific, excuse me, illness, examples of how the plan supports natural resources as you indicated earlier?
Yes, definitely. So as I mentioned earlier, there's some hydrological studies that were done on the site to identify wetlands, streams, wet weather conveyances. All of those natural resources have required buffers from the state federally. We've made shifts, for example, in the farthest, I'm going to say, page upper right area. There is a large wetland in there. As a result, we've modified the road so that we wouldn't take a road right through the middle of a wetland and have to try and permit basically an impact to that. So we've made changes to that. Other examples would be following some of the stormwater requirements set forth, water quality, water quantity. The 2008 plan, we have different regulations in place now. So as we get those regulations, we still have to meet those stormwater. So when you place those along the bottom, it impacts a little bit where your lots and your road would fall.
Mr. Carter, may I ask a question about your notes from the work session that you emailed us? So... So they had, Ethan was able to find the last two that were similar to this where we, for a measurement of major versus minor changes on roadways, and there, for lack of you, could have replaced the first plan with the second, there is no changes. I'm sympathetic to, you know, what got us here because I was part of a lot of the work sessions and the previous approval that went to the VOC where they came in what I think was correct at the time when they were changing accesses and asking for a variation before, and I think the variations were thought through, that there was a reason they were doing them. But I still feel like that in particular of the requirements is still a major change, the way the roads have been changed, et cetera, whether it's for good reasons or bad reasons. But part of your email referenced the 2016 approval, but based on conversations in the last year or so, in the last approval process, it was said that those planning commission members were told by city staff that they had to approve, they had no choice. And so using-
2016?
Mm-hmm. So using that as the, hey, we've approved this with the step system and these changes feels very misleading because they were told they had no choice then.
I wasn't here in 2016. I don't know what they were told in 2016, not reflected in the record, that they were told they had to do this or that. I can't, I can't speak to that, and I think that falls into rumor conjecture.
Okay.
About that. I can tell you that the prior plan a year ago-
Mm-hmm.
-was exactly essentially what had been approved in 2006, and this developer was told that that would not work, that-
Right.
-city didn't want that. And so now they've worked with staff, and staff, not me, but I'm talking about engineering staff, and others have worked through that in their recommendation or belief that it is in substantial compliance, not exact compliance, but in substantial compliance.
Okay.
But I can't speak to, I can't speak to what was said or what was, who was told what in 2016, I don't know anything about it.
Okay. There are-
It's not in the record.
... that were part of that board then, so I'm just curious because it, it still feels very, like a great deviance. Now we have the same entrances and exits, but the plan a year ago were different count and placement of entrance and exits, which I think were good recommendations at the time, and they were after the right thing. But it's, it's still, it feels like we're getting locked into all the negatives of history. But when they choose to use the, they want us to accept that when they change something, it's for the positive all the time, but then we are locked into our negatives, there's, there's really no give and take here.
Well, the reason why I mentioned the 2016 approval is because if the city is sued, they certainly will look back on that approval and say, well, they, they will point to that as, as, as proof of how the city has conducted itself, and I, and I think is what it is. And so that's why I sent it and pointed it out. I don't know anything about what people were told or what discussions were had at that time. I didn't even know Fairview existed in 2016, so.
Chairman, if I can ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Magner.
One of the previous, I think it was Cumberland, was approved with showing where the, the sand filtration unit will go. So I'd like to know where, where is that going to go within this development?
Yeah, very good. On the plans that we resubmitted, there's three sheets at the end of that document that have very detailed layout for the system as, as a whole. Jay, I don't know. Go to that, why?
There's an asterisk on the rendering.
Yeah, come up here. There's asterisks on the rendering.
That's fine. Jay Easter with Reagan Smith. Receiving the comments at the work session, on, on the master plan rendering, we added an asterisk on the rendering that showed where the sand filtration system would be, along with the resubmital following the work session, contained some more detailed layout information of the, of the drip fields.
Okay, thank you. Along that line, I know the septic systems at the residential properties do not function without power. How will this sand filtration system work without power? Is it also required? That might be a question for our, our authority.
Good evening, my name is Aoussah Ahmed, I'm with SCC, we're the design team on the step system. So basically, those step systems have a 24-hour holding capacity in the step tank by the house, so each one will have-
Yeah, sorry, not the house, the, the sand filtration system.
So the sand filtration system has 100% capacity, a daily capacity for the design flow. So basically, when we design those systems, per TDEC requirement, we have to provide this storage capacity to basically contain the entire sewer, assuming the peak flow is there. So for this system, we have-
I think it's 146,000 gallons per day.
146,000, so we have to provide this volume to fully contain the entire inflow from the-
So you have a 24-hour blackout period.
We have a 24-hour storage capacity beside the storage capacity in the septic tank at the, at the house. Everything will be power operated, but this is basically a safety factor that we put in the design, and it's required by the state.
Okay, but, all right, so but beyond 24 hours, the system does not filtrate, correct?
The, the system will have holding capacity for 24 hours, that's what's required to be provided, so.
After 24 hours.
That's an extreme event. If 24 hour, there is no power, probably the wastewater, the operator will provide emergency power to be able to operate the system. They can speak about that, but that's all what's required to be provided at the, for the design.
Okay, so if, if we were to have a bad weather event and we lose power for greater than 24 hours, will there be any flow from, let's say, 10% of the houses are on emergency generator? This is a, this is a scenario I'm just throwing out, that's pumping the affluent to the filtration system. What happens to the sand filtration system after 24 hours if it exceeds its 24-hour capacity?
So also, the calculations assume all the lots are operational at the same time. So this is a very high safety factor that we put. Usually, not every house has affluent at the time. The probability of all 400 and something lots pumping at the same time is almost 1% or 2%. So this is really an extreme event that doesn't happen at all. We just, when we design, we design systems to the most extreme event to be able to handle the entire capacity for 24 hours. In reality, this system will stand for a couple days with taking, couple lots will be pumping, or the 15 gallon, the 1500 gallon tank at the house will be full. Not all the houses will be, will have tanks full at the same time, all of them, trying to say, those pumps will not operate until the water level hits a certain elevation.
I understand. I guess, I, I know it's, you know, we've approved these, steps are relatively new to the community, they're becoming more, more common, more popular. So I'm not, I'm not questioning the use of step, what I'm questioning is how comfortable are we with approving the system now with better improved knowledge, if you can let me finish my question here. I know some of the, the final engineering only works within the process of your project. You're going to fund certain portions of engineering along with the project, but it, it's hard for me to approve a drip irrigation field that potentially will leach onto a neighbor's property, and how can I know without final engineering that we're not going to be overflowing any affluent to a neighbor's property? That's, that's really what I need confirmation with.
Which I don't think this is going to happen because the water will come to the step system as raw sewage. We have a treatment train, so water, the raw sewage will go through the sand filter, get filtered, and then go to the final dosing tank, and from the final dosing tank will go to the UV for disinfection. So in reality, this water will be ready for irrigation. It will be dripped into the ground through a drip line.
Is it potable water?
It is not potable water, it's, it's not safe to drink, but it's clean enough to be injected to the soil.
So but if it overflow, what I'm, where's the engineering that tells me that if that system were to overflow with runoff onto a neighbor's property that's using a well system or their own irrigation, and you just said it's not potable water, I need the engineering that tells me that this property is adequate to support any overflow or any runoff and prevent it from going to a neighbor's well source. That's what I'm looking for.
Commissioner, if I, if I may, because I think we're, I think we're off, I think we're off of what our duty is here. This board sits as a quasi judicial body. Your decision needs to be made on a rational basis and has to be not arbitrary or capricious. So the question is to the step system, is, is this the only system that Dixon Water Authority will allow any new development over 40 homes to use? And it is. They have to accept it, and they become responsible for it as part of their, as part of their sewer when it's accepted. It's, it has to be, the standard it has to meet is a standard that TDEC, TDEC sets. And so that's the requirement. So if they've designed it according to TDEC standards, we cannot question it beyond that.
I'm, I'm questioning though, we're having to approve the site plan.
I understand.
This drip irrigation field was not on a previous plan. It is now. While the system was approved, and I, at some point, the engineering will have to be completed, what I'm trying to make sure is this is a highly topographical area, and the layout of this particular site plan potentially can present runoff to a neighbor. So I feel obligated that if we were to approve this-
The condition needs to be that it be designed and approved by TDEC. Not whether we, not whether we set forth a hypothetical that this could possibly happen if this event happens, that the, the condition is that it be approved and designed pursuant to TDEC and accepted by Dixon County Water Authority. Other than that, I think we're, we're off to in left field and we're making-
Okay, so-
-irrational, arbitrary, and capricious.
So Dixon County, they become the liable party should-
Yes.
-of a pending lawsuit? Okay, thank you.
Yes, and, and I think what you'll find when you study these step systems is they are a lot safer and more dependable than septic tank systems, which we have all over this community, and they're not regulated. But the question is, is it TDEC designed? Is it going to be approved by TDEC? Is that the condition? I assume that's the condition, and that needs to be accepted by Dixon. If that's not accepted by Dixon, then, then they don't have, they don't have a system out there.
Just to add, so the system, the well serve letter from Dixon County Water Authority says they will accept the sand, the step system, and this step system will be submitted to Dixon County Water Authority for review and approval, then it will go before TDEC for approval as well. Then we're doing a state operating permit, and Dixon County Water Authority will be the holder of this permit, basically.
Okay, so the public of Fairview just needs to know and understand that Dixon Water Authority owns that liability at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just ask some questions for staff. So there were several references to the current plan meeting our current zoning ordinance. In front of us, we have a site development plan, is that correct? That would tie to a master development plan, the controlling document?
Yes, it would be a development plan that's tied to a controlling document, their preliminary master development plan.
Does the preliminary master development plan need to meet our current requirements of, of what would be required on a preliminary master development plan? Like, so master development plans seventeen one oh three point two, the ability of the proposal and the manner in which the proposed plans will comply with landscape provisions found in the Fairview Design Review Manual, so is there a tree density sheet? Is there a tree bank fund implementation? The general means of the disposition, the disposition of stormwater with preliminary drainage calculations, including any detention for retention areas. So it also says detailed listing of the offsite improvement, I'm sorry, preliminary drainage calculations showing 25-year, 100, 100-year flows and provisions for detention retention. So all these checklists that aren't in this plan that we're seeing are those required with the underlying document. There's a few more that I could list or question, but there's just not, there's, I feel like there's things missing that we're not seeing that we would usually see in a PUD, preliminary master development plan.
Mr. Carter may be able to speak to this point, but I believe with this being the controlling document that was previously approved in 2008, that the controlling document with what it has in it and how it was approved would control, and we would be asking you to be, compare this development plan that you have in front of you and evaluate if it is within substantial compliance of the previously approved document.
Mr. Greer is correct. They, of course, need to meet all the life safety codes, road, road codes, any of our, any of the life safety codes, fire safety, those all have to be met. But otherwise, the PUD that was, the property was rezoned in 2006, and that's the zoning for this property.
So, but a preliminary master development plan would require stormwater calculations? Do we have the, we don't?
And maybe the applicant needs to, to speak to that, because I'm not sure, I'm getting to your question, Mr. Butler.
There's one, it's offsite improvements, a detailed listing of offsite improvements to roads, stormwater drainage systems, sanitary sewer, water supply systems, and other public facilities, including easements which are required to mitigate the impacts of the proposed development. So to me, that sounds like I should have something in front of me that says, here's our impact, here's our proposed improvements, and how we're going to address those impacts.
I think Mr. Easter probably is in the best position to answer that with Reagan Smith. That's, that's what he, he does on a daily basis. Mr. Easter?
So I believe the section you're, you're reading now is the new POD ordinance. And those were all the documents we submitted last time when we were seeking a PUD or POD revision.
You guys were quoting, referencing how you met our current zoning ordinance, and so there's just still a lot of unanswered questions, and if it 2000, if, because it's approved in 2008, you don't have to follow any of those, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay, so as far as the, the, it's the 2008 PUD, from what we've been told, is our controlling document, and we are meeting the landscape or the buffer requirements that are on it. We have submitted a traffic study along with this plan that, that outlines the traffic improvements for the development, development plan. But once we were denied the, the amendment or the PUD modification and came back and met with staff, we were instructed that our, our next appropriate step would be to take the 2008 PUD, move from the zoning ordinance into the subdivision regulations, and follow the development plan process, and the checklists that are outlined in the subdivision regulations for what is to accompany a development plan. And that's what's been submitted. Now, following this approval, construction documents would be prepared and then, and then submitted to the city.
Mr. Butler, for clarification, you were asking in their controlling document, why is, why are these items not met?
You're asking us to approve a site development plan that, to me, doesn't, we don't have all the information for, if the original document's missing things. That's correct, yep. If I don't know the impact of the plans to fix the impact, if I don't know the preliminary storm- stormwater calculations, if it was a tree density study, is there a tree bank fund payment? All, all those lists?
All of which I don't think were required at the time the zoning was put in place.
That was my point, Mr. Butler. They've, they've complied with what they've needed to comply because the zoning was put in place in 2008.
So how do we, how do we tell the citizen, or just, we just approve a blanket, a blanket approval of?
I think, I think when the city denied what they came with last year, I think that's the position the city put them in to come back with a plan that substantially complied.
We stay to the business at hand, is what I feel like. We keep, we keep referencing a year ago, I understand, but that's not what we're talking about tonight.
But, but to answer your question, they've complied with what they need to comply with this submission. I think that's what staff is telling you. You may not like that answer, but, but they've complied.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around, how can I vote on something when I'm missing information?
Because they've, they've complied with what they need to comply with under our zoning ordinance and that, and the zoning was put in place in 2008. Those requirements were different in 2008. And, and that may not be a popular answer, but I think it's the right answer under what we have. I think when they came back last year, the reason why I mentioned last year is because I think at that point, you could have, when they were asking for reapproval, you could have asked for those things. And, and at that time, it was a denial by the BOC. So now, now we're back here.
They would be required. Last year, they would have been required.
And they were submitted last year.
And they were submitted and they were denied, but, but this, this proposal is different than the one that was submitted last year. This is, this they need to comply with substantially and if they, if they have, that's what they need, that's, that's the guide mark there.
So in, in 2006, when the original plan was approved and it came back 2008, I can't find planning commission meeting minutes from 2006. You guys might have them, I, I cannot find them. But the BOC meeting references, the developer at the time or the applicant at the time references all the road improvements that he's going to make. And, and then there was a note read for public sewer that night. So I still, from 2006 to now, I still, we still don't have a list of what are those road improvements? What are those plans? What are the impacts? Does that make sense?
Commissioner Butler, we submitted a complete traffic study for this development.
Yeah, I, I have the summary. It's pretty foreign to me.
Okay.
But when our ordinance says you would have a breakdown list, I would, that's what I would hope for, to speak to more of my language.
There's a list of recommendations in the traffic study and our traffic engineer's here tonight and she is happy to come up here and walk through them.
But is there a plan of what you make, you plan on doing? Is there, is, what, what are you, what are you going to?
We will make the recommendations that are, that are in the traffic study. We will meet. Yes, meet, meet and make the, the road improvements that are recommended for the development in the traffic study.
I think if there's any ambiguity about that, Commissioner Butler, and you want to make sure, you could make it contingent on them fulfilling.
So you're, so the traffic study, the traffic study, they're always very confusing to me. Pretty much the summary is always, your road stinks now, it's going to stink when we're done with it too. And so that, that's fair, we'll take it. But like one of the comments is at the intersection of Northwest, the city plans on making traffic control improvements. If in future date, the impact from your development requires the improvements that you would make, you would need to make them, is how I interpret it.
If the city, it's our understanding, there's an ongoing project with the city to improve that intersection.
Absolutely, but if you start in January, we're going to have, this was the lapse of, you're going to be on a road that's got an F rating that's going to put our citizens or people in danger, is it? That's what I'm trying to understand, what, what is the plan? I just feel like there's so many missed components.
If the city does not, if the city does not fulfill, finish the project that is on the books for the city to make those improvements, by the time the traffic counts hit for our development, then this development would be responsible for making the necessary improvements that our impact creates to that intersection. But it's our understanding, there's an ongoing project with the city to improve the intersection of Highway 96 Northwest Highway.
Absolutely, I'm just worried about timing. If we're, if we're incomplete and you're finished, how to?
I do, I do not foresee you being incomplete by the time we're finished.
Or even the, you know, the first 40 cars, it's just going to make a major impact in the intersection and the, and the improvements aren't there. And so, and that's where the ordinance tells me I would have a list or a plan. I don't have that, so it's just unknown to me of what our vision or plan is. And then the old plan references road improvements, but I don't, I still don't have a list or understanding.
Commissioner.
Mr. Owens.
Could I suggest maybe that if, if this is a concern that one of, with Mr. Carter's blessing, the contingency might be that the traffic study, the traffic impact study is revised and updated with each successive submittal of construction plans per phase. So when phase two, when construction plans are submitted for phase two, the applicant would also have to submit a revised and updated traffic study. And that if that traffic study at that time indicated or recommended that the improvements to that intersection be made as a result of that second phase coming online, then the applicant would be responsible if the city had not undertaken that project by that time. Same phase three, phase four and so on. And so that way, before any additional phases are brought online, there would be an amended traffic study that would be submitted with the construction plan documents that staff would review, along with all the other construction plan, plan sheets there. That might be an option that allows for the timing issue to, to resolve itself if the city is, is not able to complete the, the road project by the time that more and more phases come online.
How many phases are there, remind me? Over how many years?
Over six phases, over seven years.
That's not an uncommon condition and many cities use that type of condition.
And we're in complete agreement with that condition.
To monitor roadway impacts over time. Because the impact, obviously the impact of 400 and how many houses doesn't happen on day one.
We're going to be another 20 years. Some poor planning commission is still going to be trying to solve the riddle.
Yeah, but I, I think that's, that's one way to handle or mitigate that issue, Commissioner Butler, and I think that's a good recommendation by Mr. Owens.
Mainly for the Gregson Maloney guys, but if anyone else has an answer to it, I'm open to hearing it. I'm still wrestling with all the road changes, even though I think in a lot of ways, they're improvement, when we talk about substantial deviation compared to other things we've been It, I just keep getting stuck with like, they get the good things and we get the bad things and we have to deal with everything from, it just, it's gotten, the rhetoric is starting to really wear on me after a couple of years. What are y'all seeing in other cities or other things you're looking at? Because these, I mean, you can't even use the same road. There are roads that are missing, there are roads added, there are alignments and that's, it says road alignments, it says road changes. To me, that's significant. If you can't literally label the same name on every road, that, that's changes. That's not just moving it because it aligns better, that's not. They may be improvements, but those are changes. And where does that leave us as a city, once we approve this, that becomes the standard that we've approved, that this much change is allowed and puts us on the hook for even more developments from back then?
Senior, the changes that are, have been incorporated into the development plan that's before you tonight are generally all internal to the development. And it's my opinion that they don't result in significant alterations to the internal traffic flow, certainly as it relates to the existing public right of ways that they are connecting to. So in that regard, the integrity of the, the routes that are internal to the development, primarily with the terminology that has been used previously, particularly in the work session, is the east and west spine, if you will, that connects pretty much the entire development is still intact. Some of the, if you will, appendages have been altered. I don't think anyone's denying that. But the overall impact to the way traffic will be circulated within the development and then ingress and egress to existing public right of way is, is a negligible change or impact, in my opinion.
So it's really about the impact of it, not, I mean, because, I mean, I think we all know that that wording probably needs to be very much clarified in the future on what considers a major and, and have some definition, but in just looking at other things, they, I mean, I mean, I don't know how you get away with moving to a step system and not calling it major. I mean, and I'm not saying it's not an improvement, but now it's all in our opinion and what we're opening the door to.
I think one thing that I would, biggest litmus test if, as far as the road alignment goes is if there were connect, internal connections that were omitted or removed that then forced an additional density area onto a different existing public right of way. For instance, if there were only two entrances to a subdivision and they were connected internally and then you had a development plan that came back proposing to eliminate that connection, well, now that, that could pose some significant alterations in traffic and driving patterns and habits and where that new traffic flow would be released onto your existing public right of ways. So in that context, there's nothing that has been proposed in this plan that would significantly alter in that manner.
Do any of you happen to have the traffic study with you?
Maybe a layman's breakdown of what it means?
If you may, or if you will, I think it would be nice just to have it read out loud to everybody what improvements are listed, recommended, since we've been talking about that. And then I'll have some questions for you, but if you could identify those for everyone.
All right. I have a couple pages, so stick with me, guys. And I don't want to lose all my papers too, sorry. Sorry, my name is Tiffany Giornano with Reagan Smith. I'm a traffic engineer, licensed PE and PTOE, professional engineer. So, and this is just the conclusion, conclusions and recommendations that are in the executive summary. Can go into more detail if we really want to, but let's start with just per intersection that we studied and analyzed. And if we want more detail, we can definitely get into it. So the first one is at Highway 96 and New Hope Pass and the project access. And that will be kind of the first phase one, that will, correct? That will be part of phase one. So the project access to Highway 96 should align with the existing New Hope Pass intersection. The south leg of the intersection should be designed to meet City of Fairview and Tennessee Department of Transportation standards with a minimum of two lanes exiting and one lane entering. So that's the first one. Traffic volume based signal warrant analysis determined a traffic signal is not expected to be warranted at the intersection. Based on traffic volume turn lane warrant analysis, an eastbound right turn lane should be constructed on Highway 96 when the project access to the Bell Haven development is constructed. The right turn lane should provide approximately 170 feet of storage and a taper length of 180 feet. And before I continue, those storage lengths are based off of stopping site distance from TDOT department, or from TDOT, it's in their design guidelines. Based on traffic volume based turn lane warrant analysis, a westbound left turn lane should be constructed on Highway 96 when the project access to the Bell Haven development is constructed. The left turn lane should provide 170 feet of storage and a taper length of 180 feet with approach and departure tapers per City of Fairview, TDOT and MUTCD standards. Additionally, an opposing eastbound left turn lane should be constructed with a storage length of 50 feet. This eastbound left turn lane is not warranted by traffic volumes, but should be constructed to maintain positive site distance. So that way, they're turning left, they're not blocked by the people opposing them. During the design of the project access, it should be confirmed that there is minimum site distance available and a TDOT grading and entrance permit will be required for construction in TDOT right of way. So that's for our first access. Do I have any questions so far on that one?
The no signal, a turn lane in both directions on 96.
Yes. In summary, yes. Based on, so now we're moving over to Highway 96 at Northwest Highway slash Jingle Road. Based on background traffic condition projections and traffic volume based turn lane warrant analysis, so that's based off of the existing traffic plus an annual growth rate plus the developments that have been approved besides Bell Haven. So everything else that's kind of going on in the area. The City of, sorry. The City of Fairview should construct an eastbound right turn lane and a westbound left turn lane with an opposing eastbound left turn lane to maintain positive site distance. Additionally, a northbound right turn lane will be beneficial for future traffic conditions and level of service. It should be noted that the turn lane warrants are expected to be met without any traffic contribution from the Bell Haven development. But if the City of Fairview does not construct the turn lanes at this intersection, the Bell Haven development should construct the turn lanes when the traffic volume based turn lane warrants are met. No, that sounds like a lot of mumbo jumbo. Does that make sense though? Okay. So then continuing, traffic volume based signal warrants are projected to be met during background traffic conditions. City of Fairview shouldn't install a traffic signal at the intersection when this traffic signal volume warrants are met. It should be noted that the traffic signal warrants are expected to be met without any traffic contribution from the Bell Haven development. If the City of Fairview does not construct the traffic signal at this intersection, the Bell Haven development should construct the traffic signal when traffic volume based warrants are met.
Just real quick, did you say they currently are met?
Yeah.
But then when they are met? So it currently needs it?
They're projected to be met during background traffic. So they're not met existing when we took our counts in, apologies. We collected counts in September 2023. When we collected those traffic counts, they were not met per the traffic signal warrants, per the traffic volume warrants, but they're expected to be met when, so you add in the annual growth rate and the other traffic that is in the area. So without Bell Haven, but in the future, they're expected to be met. A traffic's volume based signal warrant study should be conducted in three years, three years to determine if the traffic signal should be installed. The traffic signal warrant study will include collecting new traffic data. The traffic volume based traffic signal warrants are met, then a traffic signal should be installed. If the traffic signal warrants are not yet met, another traffic signal warrant study should be conducted annually, annually until the traffic volumes indicate a traffic signal should be installed. To minimize impacts to existing traffic, the turn lanes and the traffic signal at the intersection should be constructed at the same time and a TDOT grading and entrance permit will be required for construction in TDOT right of way. Right, so that's at Northwest Highway and Highway 96. Northwest Highway at Elrod, no intersection control changes or geometry modifications are recommended at the intersection due to the impact of the Bell Haven development. Traffic volume based turn lane warrant analysis were conducted for total traffic conditions at the intersection and it was determined. at the intersection, and it was determined that turn lanes are not warranted. Then we move down to Northwest Highway at Dice Lampley Road. It's the same recommendations, no intersection control, control changes or geometry modifications due to the impact of the Bell Haven development. Turn lane warrant analysis were conducted, and it was determined turn lanes are not warranted. Northwest Highway at Cox Pike, same thing. No intersection control changes or additional laneage due to the Bell Haven development. Traffic volume-based warrants were conducted, and it was determined turn lanes are not warranted. Elrod at Anderson, same thing. No intersection control changes or additional laneage due to the Bell Haven development. Traffic volume-based warrant analysis were conducted, and it was determined turn lanes will not be warranted.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but if there's anything that there is no changes, you can just, I just want to identify the additions that you, that were identified in this study.
Okay, apologies. Northwest Highway, Northwest Highway at Project Access. Now we're getting to the Project Access, and I think that's what you guys are really interested in. The west leg of the intersection should be designed to meet City of Fairview standards with a minimum of one lane exiting and one lane entering. During the design, it should be confirmed that the site distance is available, and then the turn lane warrant analysis determined it, turn lane warrants, turn lanes will not be warranted at that intersection. Elrod at Project Access, again, this is going to be creating that four-legged intersection, should have a stop sign on the north and south leg, and they should align. Minimum site distance should be available, and turn lanes are not warranted at that intersection. Dice Lampley at Project Access, it should be met, should have a minimum of one lane entering and one lane exiting, should be confirmed that site distance is available, and turn lanes are not warranted. And then Anderson Road at the Project Access, one lane entering, one lane exiting, confirm site distance, and turn lanes are not warranted.
Thank you. So, one, I just wanted that to be read out loud to everybody so we know what, what the traffic study reflected. Two, I believe on Northwest Highway, that's already being redone by the city and another developer up to the Dice Lampley intersection, if my memory serves me. And then there'll also be some changes made on the 96 Northwest Highway intersection by the city up into about your, the proposed development location. Is that also, I believe that's also correct. So there's a gap in the middle. And as you read, there is, and I'm sorry, these aren't necessarily questions for you. I don't know who would be best to answer them, but as the traffic study reflected, we currently aren't at the point yet to where these things are needed, although it is reflected that we're getting there, correct? So I can't help but think that the addition of the largest development in the history of our town is not going to drastically accelerate that timeline, which would then put a financial burden on the city to come up with the money to fix those roads. So at least for discussion's sake, and I know it was something that was on some rendition of this in the years past, that there'd be some larger road improvements made in a partnership agreement with the city and the development. I think it's asking a lot of our citizens to have that taxpayer money go towards a road, multiple roads in the area that are undoubtedly going to be affected by this development in a major way. We have some other developments in the Northwest area. I don't think they are a fourth or a fifth of the size of this one. So impact-wise, and, and I get it, traffic studies, I'm not sure how those, I'm no traffic study professional, but are those, well, we'll see how, we'll see how Northwest Highway looks once people realize the shortcut that can be made to get to town from that development versus the highways. It seems like there would be an immense amount of traffic coming to that Cox Pike Northwest Highway intersection, in my opinion. But anyway, I don't know who from your, from your group can speak to that, but I mean, is there any willingness to be flexible on coming up with some level of agreement on, on road improvements beyond what the traffic study is suggesting?
Hello. My name's Matt Dowdell. I'm with D.R. Horton. Yes, we are willing to help with some improvements on Northwest Highway. Through our previous iterations of the plan, there wasn't a full-out road design yet, there wasn't, I don't even think survey had been completed yet. So we knew that there was some sort of a project. We didn't know what it was going to exactly be, and we were, during that process, willing to try to come to an agreement for some sort of a contribution. With that plan, we had eliminated our access to Highway 96 at the request of staff, knowing that we were going to put basically all of our traffic on the Northwest Highway, so it made sense that we were willing to contribute to that. Here, we're putting our traffic back on the Highway 96 to meet the requirements of the PUD plan, but we would still be willing to help contribute, especially, you know, in our section where our frontage is. We just don't know what that might be. We haven't seen any kind of road plans, we haven't seen anything. So, I mean, through the cooperation, we're willing to work with the city to provide some contribution for that.
Thank you. Yeah, and if I might, yeah, go ahead.
The way to protect the city on that is to add a condition that, that it's, that a development agreement will need to be approved by the BOC as, as far as the, their share in, of the improvements, the improvements and their share. Just, Ethan can make a note of that. So if you're inclined to add that condition, and that's a concern, then that's the type of condition I would add, now that they've said that they, they would be agreeable to that. And so what that would mean is after this meeting, if it's approved, then there would be discussions about what their improvements are and what their financial contribution, contribution is pursuant to their percentage of road impact, and then the payment to the city and the timing of the payment. That would be done in a development agreement, which, which I think you all are familiar with, with how those work. And it would need to be approved by the BOC. So just act as an additional protection and make sure that that's done before the first permit is pulled.
Thank you. No, no, you're good.
Well, the thought was on my mind. I wanted to get it out. Thank you.
All, all is well. Thank you. I think that's all I had. I just, I, I'm concerned that if this moves forward, that the, the road improvements that were prior discussed in years past are no longer being discussed. And I think that that, if we are, you know, if this is being considered at the moment, and if it passes, I personally would like to see our city get something out of the deal.
We want to help, we want to help contribute to that.
As, as everyone knows, it's, it's in, you know, it's been around for a long time. It's more of a inherited development that this board and really majority of this town have to deal with now. So if it is going to move forward, I, I just felt that we should discuss that, and it's, I'm happy to know that you guys are willing to work with us on it.
Yeah. Could staff comment on the, kind of the status of the design or where you are in the process?
Right now, we have, I'll show you up here. So if you want to turn around and look back up here, off of the corner of Dice Lampley, going through the Belvoir Development, there is a piece of Northwest Highway that will be a 62-foot right of way. Included in this plan along their Northwest frontage is 30 feet of right of way that the developer is giving to the city. And they have 15 feet of right of way that is being given along Dice Lampley. Along Northwest, that would take our existing right of way from 32 feet to 62 feet, which is what we're shooting for. Out at the end, our project begins about right there and goes out to Highway 96. That project is currently in the preliminary stages, beginning the environmental piece of that preliminary survey. We have a few proposed roadway designs through there at this point. Nothing is set in stone, but I would expect as we progress through that, we're probably 36-ish months from having that completed.
Mr. Chair, I have just a couple of other quick, sorry, follow-up questions from earlier, if I can. I guess now with the sand filtration system being shown in the leach field, will the service drive have to be extended now to reach that facility?
I can speak to that. Yeah, there would have to be a access drive. So if you see on that plan, there's a connection to the existing right of way, there would be a drive that would go through there.
Is that paved or is that gravel?
It's paved. It has to be to Water Authority Dixon County standards. And they require a paved surface.
On the controlling documents, which we're referring to back for tonight's review, on the 2016 site plan, did we have a leach field? I can't recall. Do we have the 2016?
2016 development plan? Yes, there was one in the same location.
In the same location? Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I think we have two amendments that we could probably go ahead and voice and put a vote to.
I was, I was curious on, it was just something I wanted to discuss. I didn't know how the rest of the planning commission felt about it, if that's something we want to consider or want to, want to add. I mean, there was no comment.
Mr. Carter, should we vote on them separately? Let first and second?
Yeah, I think, because they may, they may have differing support. So I think the way to do would be for someone to make a motion to add this condition, and then there'll be a second, and then a vote, and then a second condition or third condition, whatever you're going to add. And I do think it's a good idea to do separate, because they may garner different levels of support or non-support. If you could make sure to read them slowly, because I think Rachel's going to try to write them down.
Commissioner Butler, did you want to take a crack at your amendment that you were proposing?
Mr. Owen, do you want to take a crack at what I was trying to tell you? I think it was that the plan was, or a motion, correct me, as a, do this, a motion to revise, require revise and update with each phase of the traffic impact study. What's the best way to, amending what improvements need to be made based off the time of the study or how?
Butler, Senyard, if you can call the roll on that amendment.
Which one are we voting on?
We just have one.
There's one out there right now, right?
I believe it's just the one.
Is this an amendment to the name?
Yeah, this is just the amendment, just the amendment that Mr. Butler just read. Yes, sir. To the revised traffic study after each phase is what was proposed.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye. Motion is amended 9-0. Was there another one or just the one that I discussed with the road improvements? How is that easily worded? I don't know, because there's a lot of variables. There's studies and agreements and condition, I mean.
So I would, I would move to, move to, does anyone want, on the board, want to take a crack at it before I speak?
I propose that we amend to require developer agreement that the BOC has to approve prior to any permitting.
Regarding road improvements and the developer's share thereof?
Sharing of road improvements.
I will second it.
Say that one more time.
I amend, propose an amendment that there is a development agreement with the developer that is approved by the BOC regarding their share of road improvements on the roads they're affecting before the first permit is issued.
I'm defining what permit you're talking about.
Any of their permits?
Building permits?
Staff's standpoint, that's, that's a critical thing. So if we're just talking about building permits for individual homes.
I think, I'll, I'll concede to that one. First, building, house building permit.
Staff have a recommendation?
But is the developer actually, yeah, I was like, are they actually pulling the house building permits?
Let's do this. Why don't we do it that, might I suggest that you make the agreement before any final plat is recorded?
Okay. Okay. Before any final plat.
That, that would, they can't sell any lots if there's not any plats, and you can't get a building permit without a lot, so.
Can I?
Is this?
Sorry. Can I hear the applicant out?
Is it language specific to Northwest Highway? I think it just said road improvements. I just want to make sure.
I did just say road improvements, in case there was, leaving this BOC open to working whatever deal they thought was the developer agreement worked out best, because they may ask you for, but relevant to your, what you're affecting.
Impacted roads, yeah. But I, but I agree, I think that would be, it sounds like it's going to be still, that portion will be up for discussion with the BOC if it gets to that point to where, is that staff or Mr. Carter, is that accurate? Is that the best way to do it? I mean, I don't think, personally, that's a large development that has a, a lot of roads around it, so if there's high impact that, I don't know.
It'd be my belief it's Northwest, but I was trying to not corner them into, in case they were already improving Northwest and asked them to do this instead because they were doing.
Comfortable with the motion that you made with Mr. Owen's suggestion and about the details of the development agreement if we get to that point. And I agree, it would most likely be Northwest Highway, but I, I don't know, sitting here, so I don't know how you would know. We have the same TIS, and I'm not a, to Mr. Butler's point, that's about how they read to me most of the time also, so.
Just for reference, I feel like we would want to have that clear and defined as early as possible, and not necessarily with the final plat, just, I think for their party, for our party, just to know exactly what's going to entail in that. I don't know if it's another change or if there's been a second or.
Oh, by leaving it the way we suggested, it incentivizes the developer to come to that agreement sooner rather than later, because they would be taking a great risk of performing all the construction, putting the infrastructure in if that agreement had not been executed. So I, I think that would probably coincide with their desires as well as worded.
Jones, did you get all that? Are we good? So I believe I, I seconded it, yeah. Senyard, McDonald, and you can call the roll, please. Again, this is for the second amendment to the motion.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Amendment passes 9-0. All right, now that we got those out, we will open it back up to any further questions or comments from Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, for staff, will, will this be required to meet the current stormwater regulations when construction documents come in?
Yes, those are, I mean. That would be under the life safety, and I don't, Mr. Easter's shaking, he said yes, so those are the kind of requirements that, that are absolutely required to meet all the current life safety codes. That includes stormwater, fire, road width, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the answer is yes.
Thank you.
I just have one final comment. I feel somewhat hamstrung on the vote, again, on this submission. I think in the future, we need a sunset clause that. this submission. I think in the future, we need a sunset clause that developments, projects, submissions cannot be extended over such a lengthy period of time.
Can't do that under state law. So once the property is rezoned, it's zoned that way. You can't, it can't be, zoning put in place for only some of the years. So if you remember the last time, the last year, and I know no one wants to talk about last year or 2016 or 2008, but this zoning was put in place in 2000, I keep saying 2006, but maybe it was 2008. And that's the critical, you know, when you rezone property, it has serious consequences because then it's zoned that way unless it's rezoned. And the city can't rezon the property, the applicant can. And so that's where we are. So I understand what you mean, and that would be great if we could do that. But currently, it's illegal in the state of Tennessee to do that, to zoning. Once it's zoned, it's zoned.
Any additional questions or comment? All right, hearing none, we will call the vote, please.
To be clear, this is the main question as amended. Voice. Thank you.
Ms. Shulist?
No.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
No.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
No, citing Article 10-203.5, item eight in the zoning ordinance.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye. Motion passes five four.
Sorry, aye. Motion passes five four. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to item number two, PC Resolution, PC 4123, adopt planning commission's schedule for February 2024, January 2025.
Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I've looked over the calendar, and unless anyone else sees anything, I don't, I don't see any conflicts, except if anyone knows the schedule for the schools' spring break, that would be the only conflict that I would see. I don't see anything else.
I'd imagine Mr. Butler could probably get that information pretty quick.
He Googled.
It was just, it was just released a week or two ago.
Yeah, I didn't see any conflicts as far as like holidays or anything like that for the meeting portion. Staff, is there anything related to this schedule that you would like to address?
Do we need to grab a motion first?
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
All motion, we approve.
There a second?
Second.
Senyard, Magnner?
So now we can have the discussion.
You can give me one minute and let me pull up the school calendar. I checked it against our city holiday calendar, but not against the school calendar. So give me one minute.
March, it's March. I think fall break may conflict.
Fall break, seventh through 11th.
And that's October. That would be that week.
What is spring break?
And spring break will be March 10th through 14th. Commissioner Butler, just to note that I believe the calendar you're looking at is
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. This would only be for the 24 calendar year.
So that October date is 24, seventh through 14th. Spring break for 24 will be 11th through 15th.
Okay, so we'll need to move the 12th to another day.
Yeah, March is meeting either up or, staff, is it easier for you all to move it back a week instead of up a week? Is that the more appropriate thing to do?
Yes, it would be easier to move it to the following Tuesday, which would put it on the third Tuesday of the month.
So March 19th, 2024?
And along with October, that falls on the Tuesday of fall break, the 10-8, 2024 meeting date. And just to speak to the calendar, our intention with this, it kind of lays it out a little different than how we've been operating. It puts the initial project submittal date as the last Friday of the month. A week later comes a staff meeting with applicant. That would be all staff included, myself, our Griggs and Maloney, partners, fire, police, a member of the planning commission, and a member of the BOC if there was necessity to have that. Once we meet with our applicants, then we can determine at that point if their submittal is good and can move forward and if, get some initial questions and comments out there. Then we have a review period of getting initial comments back to them. Our goal is to have all of our comments issued to them at one point. And that's why you would not see a second staff comments on here as you currently see on our current calendar. That way, whenever they submit a final project submittal, they have all of our comments, all of their answers, and we no longer, hopefully, will have things coming to this commission with a lot of staff comments out there, issues unaddressed, anything hanging out there. Moving forward, I think this gives us a lot of time and communication with applicants to work through those before they get to a final stage and get put in a packet that you would see. Packets go out a week prior to the planning commission meeting. And the work session dates that are on this are the exact same as the planning commission meeting. They would be if an applicant requests at their staff applicant meeting, if you look at the dates of the staff applicant meeting and PC packets, so like for March 2024, the staff meeting is on 2/2, February 2nd. The PC packets would go out on, for the February meeting, on 2/6. So at that point, the applicant would have an opportunity sitting down with us and say, hey, we'd like to have a work session. I know we're going to be on the following month's planning commission agenda. Let's have a work session. So they would have a work session in, on the February meeting work session date, and their actual voting item would be on the planning commission agenda for March. So you would have work sessions with applicants a month prior to voting on their items.
And that's something, not to interrupt you, but you guys are comfortable with that? To be able to have the agenda pretty much ironed out that far ahead of time?
Well, for us, a work session is more of a, it's one on the request of the applicant. We do not require anyone to have a work session if they would like to have one. Just one to avoid having random dates that we have to scramble to get published and advertised from a city staff standpoint. That's, puts us kind of in a bind. It also helps if all of the dates are set and they can pick, hey, we'd like to be on this work session date instead of having random dates throughout the month that get picked as having work sessions on them. As we all saw two weeks ago, it was a Monday, there were several people who were not able to be here. If we have them all pre-established dates, you have this calendar for some of these dates over a year in advance. I would hope that we could all be in attendance for those work sessions. Of course, most of you will be here at least for the seven o'clock regular meeting. That way, it gives you a little bit of time to prepare. And with that, it gives us a meeting with the applicant so that staff can make sure, we would have their submittal for a week, be able to meet with them in person, and then be able to determine if they wanted a work session or not. So I feel like we would be comfortable at that point, having a pretty good first handle on their submittal before it got to a work session.
Do you anticipate that we will have a work session every planning commission meeting, or just if the applicant chooses?
Or have a placeholder, right?
It is a placeholder at this time, so that we can publish the dates and that those would be the same throughout the year. I do not anticipate having one every, every planning commission meeting. It is at the applicant's request, and that would be the time that is set aside for the applicant to, if they would like to request, those are the dates and times that they have.
So we should know the prior month, like a month in advance, if we are going to or not going to have a work session?
You would not know the prior month. You would know when the agenda comes out for your planning commission meeting. So you would know seven days in advance.
Gotcha.
About covered for schedule?
So, sorry. So just to recap, we're moving March and, did you say October?
And October.
Was there interference?
That's fall break for Williamson County Schools.
Monday and, Monday and Tuesday?
Their fall break?
Seven through 14, right?
Seven through 11.
Seven through 11, sorry.
So they get a week in October and a week at Thanksgiving?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That is correct. They always get a week at Thanksgiving. So they're getting a, because usually they just have...
Seven through the 11th.
Oh, usually they just have three days at fall break, so it's longer now, right?
Family the full week, teachers.
Okay, so we're doing, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I have this right. So we're doing it on October 15th instead of the 8th, is that right?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Do we need to move spring break?
March.
March.
March 12th.
Need to put that in an amendment that we're amended, okay.
Get there.
March 12th will need to be amended to move to March 19th, and October 8th will need to be amended to move to October 15th.
So moved that amendment.
Second. Butler, McDonald, call the roll, please.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes to amend the schedule. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. So now, because there's no additional comment, we will vote to adopt the new planning commission schedule. As amended.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero. We will move on to bonds and letter of credit. Number one, the only one, Aiden Woods, Phase Three Performance Bond Reduction down to $1,116,700. Is there anything staff would like to add to that or good to go?
Nothing to add.
All right, we will go to reports for discussion and information, starting with planning.
Thank you all for coming out tonight and being involved citizens of our community. And I appreciate everything that you've done and your vigilance as you've worked through several challenging months of determinations for our community. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. City manager?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Engineering department? Nothing. Finally come to the attorney.
Nothing, sir.
All good? All right. Mr. Magnner, we'll start off with you.
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Butler?
Further, thank you, chairman.
Mr. Calley?
Nothing. Thank you.
Shulist?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Schilling? Mayor Anderson?
As our next meeting will be in January, I want to say to everyone Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and have a blessed and prosperous New Year for each one of you. Thank you, staff, and our city attorney and city manager for everything you do. That would be all.
Ms. Williams?
Nothing.
And Ms. Senyard?
Nothing for me.
I don't have anything either. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year. See you in 2024. It's crazy to say.
Please let the record reflect that that will be January 9th, 2024, and that is an error on my part.
There's a motion to adjourn?
Motion.